Manana Sizus. Test, test, test. Manana Sizus, good afternoon and welcome to your Guam Legislature, the 38th Guam Legislature. This afternoon's public hearing is being conducted by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations and is called to order at this time. It is 2:01 in the afternoon on Monday, October 27, 2025. First notice of this public hearing was disseminated to all senators and media outlets on October 20, 2025, with its second notice disseminated on October 24, 2025. These hearing notices were also made available on the Guam Legislature's website, our legislative calendar, and the government of Guam's public notice portal. The committee will hear testimony on the following bills: Bill Number 186-38COR, introduced by Sabrina Salas-Mattonani. It's an act to appropriate the unallotted balance of the pharmaceutical fund to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. We will also hear Bill Number 140-38COR, introduced by Senator Chris Barnett. It is an act to add a new 90.16.2 to Article 1 of Chapter 90, Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the salary recruitment and retention studies for law enforcement officers employed by the Guam Department of Corrections to be known as the Fair Compensation and Retention for Correctional Officers Act of 2025. At this time, I would like to thank the colleagues of mine who have joined for this hearing this afternoon. First of all, Senator Sabrina Salas-Mattonani, thank you. Senator Sean Gumatauto, Senator Vince Bora, and Senator Chris Barnett. Thanks once again, colleagues, for joining us. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance of Illettuare Guam's general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chairperson before speaking and shall state their full name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the bill on the agenda, bill or bills on the agenda. Personal inferences to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal from the hearing of any member of Illettuare Guam or the public audience who fails to observe proper decorum pursuant to the 38th Guam Legislature Standing Rules. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in immediate removal from this public hearing room. With that, we will now proceed to testimony on Bill Number 186-38. But before we proceed, I'd like to ask the author to please open on the bill and discuss any pertinent information that we may need before bringing forward those who will testify. Senator Mattonani, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill 186 is about making the Guam Memorial, or making sure that the Guam Memorial Hospital finally receives money that is already theirs, but that hasn't been released to them. I first attempted this during the budget session earlier this year in the early morning hours of the final day. I introduced the concept as an amendment. Unfortunately, it didn't garner enough support from my colleagues at that time. Their main concern was verifying the numbers. I respected that, and I did not give up. Bill 186 is a continuation of that effort, this time with the full verification my colleagues asked for, provided by the Office of Finance and Budget, OFB. For years, the law has said that a portion of the business-privileged tax, 6.19%, goes into a special account called the Pharmaceutical Fund. This fund is supposed to help GMH pay for medicine, medical supplies, and equipment. The whole point of this law was to make sure GMH has a dedicated, steady source of funding separate from the general fund. But here's the problem. Even when tax collections came in higher than expected, deposits into the pharmaceutical fund were capped at the budgeted level. That practice has shortchanged GMH year after year. According to the audited financials, the Department of Administration still owes GMH 2.3 million from fiscal year 2019, 393,000 from FY 2021, 2.2 million from FY 2022, and 3.2 million from fiscal year 2023. That is a total of about $8.1 million in funds already collected but never released to the hospital. At the same time, GMH struggles in unpaid bills to vendors, companies that supply the hospital with medicine, equipment, and other essentials. This backlog means it's harder for the hospital to get the supplies they need. What Bill 186 does is very simple. It tells the government to give GMH the money it is already owed. No new taxes, no new borrowing, just paying what is due. The Department of Administration would have 30 days after the bill is passed to release the money directly to GMH. This is important because GMH is our only public hospital. We are years away from a new hospital being built. Families rely on it for emergency care, maternity services, surgeries, and so much more. When GMH struggles financially, it affects every single person on Guam. We often hear frustration about insurance companies not paying their fair share, but in this case, it's our own government that hasn't paid up. Passing Bill 186 shows that we are holding ourselves accountable and that we stand with GMH in their mission to care for our people. This bill came at the request of GMH leadership, and I introduced it because I listened to their concerns. More importantly, I introduced it because our people deserve a hospital that can meet their needs without constantly being held back by money that was promised but never delivered. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sizus Massey, Senator Mattonani. And I believe our sign-in sheet is being brought in here momentarily. But for those from the GMH team who wish to testify, please come forward. We'll prepare for you now. And anybody else that's come to sign up, please feel free to come up to sign in to testify. So, Dr. Uggan, it looks like you have a solid support team, but you're going solo today as far as testimony. So whenever you're comfortable, interim CEO, from what I understand, and general manager, Dr. Uggan, the floor is yours.
For the record, I am Jolene Maatney Uggan. Good afternoon, Chairman Duñez, Health Oversight Chair Senator Sabrina Salas-Mattonani, and members of the 38th Guam Legislature. My name is Dr. Jolene Maatney Uggan, interim hospital administrator and CEO, and I'm here today to offer testimony and strong support of Bill 186-38 on behalf of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. This bill, as introduced directly, confronts the critical financial challenges that impacts our ability to deliver care. The legislative intent is clear: to ensure GMHA has the resources necessary to meet our obligations for pharmaceuticals, medical supplies, and equipment. The appropriation of the unallotted balance of the pharmaceutical fund, as detailed in the bill, is a necessary step towards stabilizing our hospital's finances. The funding provided by this measure will allow us to address significant unmet needs. First, it will be directed toward fulfilling our anticipated accounts payable for essential medical supplies and services in fiscal year 2026. As the bill notes, GMHA faces a substantial backlog of vendor payables, which was largely addressed through the passage of Public Law 3859. However, we are tracking a $3 million gap between the requested budget amount and what was approved through Public Law 3860. This appropriation will directly reduce that burden and strengthen our relationship with the suppliers and ensure our teams have the uninterrupted flow of resources required to focus entirely on outcomes. Second, this measure will cover the necessary upfront costs associated with strategically enhancing our operational capacity. This includes exploring the outsourcing of certain functions in departments identified as lacking sufficient capacity, as well as supporting the acquisition of new software to further improve overall operational efficiency. This proactive approach aims to boost service quality, enabling our clinical staff to focus entirely on patient outcomes. It represents a forward-thinking step to modernize our hospital and elevate the overall patient experience. I must extend our deepest gratitude to Oversight Chair on Health Senator Sabrina Salas-Mattonani. Senator, we acknowledge and sincerely thank you for your persistent efforts to address these needs within the fiscal year 2026 budget discussions, and more importantly, for your dedicated leadership in authoring this bill to see this solution through to fruition. We also extend our gratitude to the co-sponsors of this legislation: Chairman Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Vince Borja, Senator Sean Gumatauto, Speaker Frank Blas Jr., Senator Jesse Luhon, Senator Sabina Perez, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, and Senator Justin Augustine. Your commitment to the health and well-being of the people of Guam is evident in this legislation. On behalf of the entire staff, and most importantly, the patients we serve at the Guam Memorial Hospital, we thank you for your consideration and urge your full support of this bill. Sizus Massey.
Sizus Massey, Dr. Uggan. And so before I turn to the author for questions or comments on the bill, I would just like to say, at this point, we are at 49.9 million, basically 50 million and counting, in our commitment from this 38th Guam Legislature to the Guam Memorial Hospital. And that consists of the 10 million, of the 40 million that was recently passed into law, that is available for capital improvement, the pending $19.8 million that we intend to hear in the November session, the $20 million in the first revenue, in excess revenue from fiscal year 2026, and now this bill totaling close to $8.1 million, as noted in the bill. So we hope all of this comes to fruition. This will be $20 million approximately in excess to what was even requested for capital improvements in the 26 fiscal year budget. So if we are able to see all of this through, we have stood by our word and our commitment to assist the hospital on all of these capital improvement needs. With that, Madam Senator, author of this bill, it's your turn to ask any questions or make any comments that you would like on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually really don't have any questions for GMH. I think we have been in constant communication on ways that we can assist you, whether it's with money or any kind of resources that you need. So I just thank you guys for always being open, this open communication that we have with each other, and you can always count on me to advocate for you. So thank you.
Sizus Massey, Senator. Senator Vince Borja, you were first to come. It's your turn at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't necessarily have any questions. I think Chairwoman Salas-Mattonani was very clear in her opening in regards to just, you know, delivering on our commitment to ensure that GMH has the resources. Or actually, I think I just have another question, or one question. I know that we've gone back and forth since budget, and you're new, but in the last committee of the hall, I forgot what it was, when we went over all the additional appropriation. Where, how does this help? I mean, I'm sure any amount can help GMH, but from your budget requests to the additional appropriation, that 40 million to this, where does that put in regards to what you guys asked for initially for your budget for the fiscal year?
So on the delivery of the subsidies that the legislature has provided, we are short roughly 3 million. And so this additional 8 million would leave us with essentially 5 million. And in my testimony, I mentioned it's not just the CIP. We also have critical projects that we'd like to put this funding towards, such as software upgrades. So we do have a lot of legacy systems, including our EHR, but this is not for the EHR, and that's to improve our efficiency. And I can give you examples. So our materials and management, as well as pharmacy, we don't have a good system that keeps track of our inventory. And so trying to get that off paper and manual mode and increase the efficiency of that. Also with HR and payroll, the AS400 is legacy, and trying to improve upon that as well. So those are some of the softwares. We also have some memberships that we'd like to acquire. The MGMA is a big resource for the hospital. It offers online training, not just for staff, but for the providers as well. It also provides the deep dive that we use to benchmark our physician salaries that we've mentioned in the past and other memberships. We're also looking at outsourcing several of our departments because we lack capacity. Our division heads have been doing a deep dive to right-size our departments, and we're looking at areas where we can make improvement.
I have no further, thank you for that. And I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Borja. Senator Gumatauto, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Uggan, for being with us this afternoon. I only have a couple of questions, if I could. For the record, what portion of the estimated $26.3 million in outstanding vendor payables, as cited in the bill, had been settled with the $40 million in additional general fund support that was authorized in Public Law 38-59, which was enacted on September 17, 2025? And what is the running balance?
For the accounts payables?
Your outstanding vendor payables.
Accounts payables, correct. So, so, and you can come, Yuka, but for the, you know, the 40 million, we actually have paid everything to date, but keep in mind that the payables will continue daily. It's fluid, right? It's not static. Just because we pay it off today doesn't mean tomorrow we won't generate new accounts.
Oh, no, I completely understand that. I'm just trying to understand where you're at with the 20, the estimated 26.3.
From the 40 million appropriation we received, we're holding on to 10 million for the two projects that it had stated. So that left 30 million to pay our vendors, and we have maybe about $130,000 left in the vendor payments. So our accounts payable looks really good right now.
Oh, and no, thank you. And I was going to ask what the running balance was, so 130.
And I'll also provide a report. We're required to provide a quarterly report. So after we get the next or last payment from DOA next week, I can prepare the report as of October 31st and prepare it for the legislature, so everybody knows where we are with that funding.
All right. Thank you so much for that, Yuka. And as a follow-up to my inquiry during the joint legislative oversight hearing on GMHA back on September 25th, what tangible steps has GMHA taken in the last three weeks, including seeking assistance from the Office of the Attorney General to secure the $10 million in excess fiscal year 2019 income tax and BPT collections, which was required by the fiscal year 2020 budget law to be deposited into the hospital capital improvement fund established by the same budget law?
Okay, so I'll, Senator, I'll have to follow up on that. Our legal has made a commitment to this, so I will find out where we are with that.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Uggan. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to ask questions today. Thank you.
Sizus Massey. Senator Barnett, you're recognized at this time.
Sizus Massey, Mr. Chair, and Biba Lunas to the people of Guam. Thank you for watching on our YouTube channel and on our TV channels as well. And congratulations, Dr. Uggan, on your appointment as the interim administrator. And thank you to the GMH team for coming out to testify. Definitely support the bill, and I just had a couple of questions. If the chair would indulge, are you able to say for the record, I know you kind of touched on it with Senator Gumatauto, but how much of the $40 million has been received and how much has been spent?
We're still pending another payment of about 5.9 million that will come in on October 30th, based on the schedule from DOA.
And you said the current amount outstanding on your vendor payables is just over 100,000?
From the listing of vendors we were going to pay, but the current accounts payable right now, including our CIPs, is around 4 million.
Okay, so it sounds like the vendors are getting some nice treats for Halloween. And then we're getting a treat on Friday when you file that quarterly report?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Can you also give us the status, if you don't mind, of the electrical panel replacement?
So we met with GPA this morning. The goal is not to replace the panel yet. That's not the initial goal. The goal is to stabilize the system. And right now, they're going to be changing out the auto-transfer switch. They're going to replace all of the motor controllers, which is the load center changeout, and then we are looking at two 1.6 megawatt generators. So we have three generators. We have the old faithful, which is 1.6, and then we have one that's about half that, I think about 650, 650, and then another old one that's 1.6. So our goal is to actually get two new ones. GPA is working very closely with GMH right now. And the first part of the procurement, I guess the notice to the AG should be going out soon.
Thank you. Last question, not really that much. So what methods is the hospital using to communicate information to the public relative to just events, public notices? And do you intend, or are you in the process of retaining any type of contractual services for public relations or anything like that?
We have, yeah. So we just recently contracted a part, what's that? Action Plan AP, part 10? Am I saying that right? Jesse. Action by AB. We have, does that, does that make sense? Action by AB.
Action.
By.
By AB?
Yes.
And how much is that, if you don't mind?
$55 per hour.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sizus Massey, Biba, GMH.
Sizus Massey, Senator Barnett. Senator Mattonani, would you like to close on the bill?
No.
Okay, well, then I will. I once again thanking the GMH family for coming down. And, you know, I'll follow closely, of course, as it is my job, Dr. Uggan and Yuka, to see these things through from the Office of Finance and Budget side. But I want to say, you know, from the day that we did the pre-budget meeting and really knew that we had a challenge in front of us, to see how this was going to work, whether or not we were going to be able to finesse this into the budget, or we were going to have to, you know, go out and stay committed to what we all committed to in the beginning, which was find alternate funding sources. And so I'm glad, as a team, we've been able to do that. And it looks like we've achieved, you know, more than what our goal was. Now it's just to execute it, and that's going to have to be on our side as well, as we have a job to do next month. We know the money's there. So the 19.8 from the savings that was realized in the fiscal year is real money, and it should be there as soon as we pass the law and the governor signs it. And then we'll be tracking the 20 million. So as your procurement goes out for your projects, we should be able to realize that excess revenue in the beginning of the year, and it's dedicated completely towards you. And then once again, looking forward to this funding source, which I'm attempting to, and believe I can get this on also the November session. So that should make us very comfortable for the projects that you have and that are coming up within the fiscal year, and then, of course, the 20 million as it tracks going through the fiscal year. So we'll make sure that happens, and if not, then we'll come back to the table on that 20 million if there's any interruption. But other than that, we should have more than enough to make sure that we can work closely with you to see through all of these projects. So at this time, nice and short and sweet for a GMH hearing and for my committee, which are normally long hearings, that will conclude this public hearing on Bill 186-38COR. And to the hospital family, thank you again for all that you do, and have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sizus Massey.
Agomas. And so that will take us now to the public hearing that's been called for the second bill of this afternoon, and that'll be on Bill 140-38COR, once again, introduced by Senator Chris Barnett, Sabrina Salas-Mattonani, or I'm sorry, Sabrina Flores Perez, excuse me. Sabrina's in Sabina's in this one. Senator Telo T. Tagui and Frank Blas Jr. And once again, it's an act to add a new 90.16.2 to Article 1 of Chapter 90, Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, relative to salary recruitment and retention studies for law enforcement officers employed by the Guam Department of Corrections to be known as the Fair Compensation and Retention for Correctional Officers Act of 2025. Senator Barnett, you have the floor.
Sizus Massey, Chairman Duñez, and un donkululuna sizus massey for the opportunity to not only open on the bill, but I thank you and your committee very much for hearing the bill today. And to our Department of Corrections family, I'm hoping that third time will be the charm, as this is the third effort that I'm undergoing with this particular piece of legislation. I had tried to get it into the budget bill in the previous fiscal year. However, I lacked the support to do so. But I was able to get Bill 358-37COR passed unanimously in the 37th Guam Legislature. However, the measure was vetoed by the governor in her veto message. She cited a bunch of different issues about the HAY study, but I want to go back to why I introduced the bill in the first place and why I reintroduced it in this term. And that's because the Guam Police Department had received a 25% differential pay, and they received this differential pay because when we underwent the HAY study and the studies for the law enforcement pay, basically all of the law enforcement personnel got the same increase. And what that did was it didn't address the disparity between the premier law enforcement agency, as they're called, the Guam Police Department, and everyone else. And so while GPD remained lower at the onset, before the implementation of the law enforcement pay increase, they were the lowest-paid law enforcement. And so when everybody got the 18%, everybody moved up, but we didn't address that disparity. And so, of course, the Guam Police Department, through efforts with the administration, were able to get the Department of Administration to conduct a study relative to the pay and retention recruitment of just specifically the Guam Police Department. And so when that happened, a lot of the Department of Corrections family had approached me as the former Public Safety Chair and asked that something similar be done for DOC. And so in conversations with the Administration Director, Ed Byrne, I was told that I would need to introduce a bill and basically introduce a bill that said, hey, Mr. Byrne, DOA, please do a study on the Department of Corrections recruitment, retention, salaries, and then, you know, through that study, make a determination if an increase in pay is warranted. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, that's what we're going to see as a result of this study. So I was actually kind of shocked that the governor vetoed the bill, and I'm hoping for a more favorable outcome. And, you know, with that being said, I did receive a lot of testimony and support of the bill, but I also want to state for the record the concerns that were shared with me by social workers who are employed at the Department of Corrections and parole officers who are employed at the Department of Corrections, and they feel that they too should be able to avail of this differential pay or any type of pay that should come as a result of this study that, you know, we're hoping will be conducted by the Department of Administration. So I just wanted to say for the record, I'm very aware of the concerns expressed by the entirety of the Department of Corrections family, and I want to work closely with the committee to amend the measure. And I don't know if we do something like ask DOA to study salary recruitment and retention for all positions employed by the Department of Corrections. I think that's probably the easiest fix with the bill we have before us. And so I thank you, Mr. Chair, again, for the opportunity to hear the bill, and I look forward to hearing the testimony. And again, I hope that the third time is the charm for this measure, which really aims to bring equity and, more importantly, solve a lot of the issues, which I think we're gonna hear about momentarily, the issues with recruitment, retention, morale and welfare of our hardworking corrections family. So sidoos masi, Mr. Chair.
Sidoos masi, Senator Barnett. And so signed up is family members from DOC that are here to support the bill. But to actually testify on the bill is Major Anton Uggan, as well as Teresa Tayama, who's also here to testify. So Major Uggan, it is your turn at the floor.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Major Anton F. Uggan. I'm a correction facility assistant superintendent with the Guam Department of Corrections. I've been with DOC for over 31 years now. I'm here today on behalf of the director, Mr. Fred Bordalio. He's unable to make it today. I do have a prepared written statement by him that I will read into the record. I also have a statement that I prepared. And my last part would be, I'm gonna, again, what you mentioned earlier, Senator, about the language in the bill, I'm gonna offer a few suggestions. So I got three points to make today. Okay? My first one would be, I'm going to read what the director wrote. He wrote it in two phases. He gave me a memo, which I emailed to the senators this morning. And right before I got down here, he gave me another, an addition to add to his statement. So I'm gonna read that in. I will email it back out when I get back to my office for the record and send it to the, the senators. It's a memorandum dated October 23, 2005, memorandum to Honorable Senator Chris Barnett, 38 Guam Legislature, Guam Congress Building, from Fred Bordalio Jr., the director of the Department of Corrections, testimony on Bill Number 140-38COR, Buenos de Hafa Day, Honorable Senator Chris Barnett. I'm providing this testimony in reference to Bill Number 140-38COR, an act to add a new subsection 90.16.2 to Article 1, Chapter 90, Title 9, Guam Code annotated, relative to salary recruitment and retention studies for law enforcement officers employed by the Guam Department of Corrections, to be known as the Fair Compensation and Retention for Correctional Officers Act of 2025. This is his comments. The employees of the Department of Correction appreciate the attention given to the recruitment and retention challenges and will certainly adopt innovative strategies that are recommended from any research study completed pursuant to this act. And again, before I got here, he added to this statement. And so I, I will read it. Additional statements from the director Bordalio reference Bill 140-38. I remind the good senators that Public Law 2142, Part V, Section 13 establishes a unified pay schedule, creating a uniform system of position classification and salary administration for public employees through the HAY, HAY system, which the Department of Corrections is already part of. In adopting the HAY system, the legislature further provided that the internal equity and external competitiveness, competitiveness of the plan should be reviewed at least every three years, and that ongoing communication and training were a critical component of administering the compensation policy. Administration of the pay plan based on the HAY methodology was assigned to the Director of Administration, who has further charged with establishing policies and procedures for implementing and compensation, and the compensation, implementing the compensation policy, sorry. Additionally, Executive Order 2022-01 established the law enforcement officer pay plan within the Competitive Wage Act, providing our law enforcement officers with their first pay adjustment in approximately eight years. Notably, Executive Order Number 2022-01 included law enforcement officers from DOC. However, well-intended, Bill Number 140-38 is, it would take the pay plan for DOC out of sequence with the ongoing HAY studies DOA conducts for all law enforcement officers on Guam, and would require DOA to conduct a rigorous study within three months. Further legislation is not necessary to ensure the timely performance of HAY studies or the implementation of pay plans. The legislature can, however, support our law enforcement officers, including those employed at DOC, by ensuring that adopted pay adjustments are funded during the budget cycle. My only ask is that you support the funding of these adopted pay adjustments when the time comes, to ensure fairness, consistency, and recognition of the essential, essential work performed by our correctional officers and other public servants. End of comments. That is Mr. Bordalio's comments on Bill 140. Now, I'm gonna read in for the record my comments. Okay? Again, I am Major Anton Uggan of the Guam Department of Corrections, a correction facility assistant superintendent. Historically, Guam, along with many other states, have struggled to hire and retain prison security staff, specifically correctional officers. In 2020, the Department of Administration established correction institution differential pay for uniformed personnels, whose duties require their work environment to be restricted to the confines of an established, secured, and guarded facility within the government. This policy applies to uniformed personnel of the Department of Corrections, the Department of Youth Affairs, and other departments as determined by DOA, who meet this policy's eligibility requirements. Despite the 25% retention pay, DOC continues to struggle with recruiting and retaining correctional officers. The purpose of a recruitment and retention study for correctional officers is to identify the reasons for high turnover, understand the workforce needs, and develop strategies to attract new candidates and keep experienced officers. By analyzing factors such as salary, benefits, training, work environment, and career paths, these studies help build a more stable, skilled, and effective workforce, better equipped to ensure public safety. Address high turnover. High turnover is costly and disruptive. A study helps pinpoint the cause of officer turnover, enabling targeted solutions to reduce the vacancies. Improve recruitment efforts. Understanding what motivates new applicants will assist DOA and DOC in developing more effective and ethical hiring practices, such as focusing on diversity and transparency. Increase retention of experienced officers. A study will help identify factors that keep officers engaged and committed, such as mentorship, professional development opportunities, and wellness initiatives. Enhance public safety. A stable and experienced correctional workforce is vital for maintaining safe and secure institution and for protecting the public. Inform policy and strategy. The findings can provide data-driven insights to help DOC and DOC leadership, DOA and DOC leadership, create and implement effective plans for hiring, training, and retaining officers. Create a new, a more competitive agency. By understanding the changing needs of the workforce, DOC, working with DOA, can implement tailored incentives and benefits to, to compete for qualified candidates and keep them from seeking employment elsewhere. For the reasons I stated above, I support Bill 140-38. Thank you.
Sidoos masi, Major Anton Uggan. Ms. Tayama, would you like to testify on the bill or are you here in support?
Yes, I would like to testify.
Please identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman Christopher Duñez and members of the committee, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Sabrina Mantenani, Senator Sean Kumatautau, and Senator Anthony Borja. My name is Teresa Tayama. I am the administrator of the Case Work and Counseling Services Division at the Department of Corrections. Thank you once again for allowing me the opportunity to speak here today. I'm here to place into the record my personal testimony on Bill Number 140-38. My comments do not reflect the opinion of my director, Fred E. Bordalio Jr. I humbly request for legislative action specifically for correctional social workers to authorize fair and equitable compensation of the premium pay known as the 25% correction institution differential pay. This premium is given to all the corrections officers with exception of the officer that is currently assigned to Homeland Security. In light of this, I ask that moving forward, the language is definitive to include correction social workers so as to provide clarity and guidance to the authorizing authority, the Director of Corrections and the Director of the Department of Administration. There is vagueness and inconsistency in the language, which interchangeably mentions employees and uniformed personnel in the DOA HR policy. The interpretation by management is that the only eligible employees are correction officers, when in actuality, the conditions for eligibility are met by both corrections social workers and corrections officers alike. Both sets of personnel have direct daily interactions with prisoners. While the security section is tasked with safety and control, the casework office provides the treatment and rehabilitation. It is logical reasoning to conclude that corrections social workers and corrections officers are equally exposed to persistent risks of danger and violence in this hazardous work environment. Our conditions are stressful and demanding as we manage our complex caseloads. William Schultz and Rosemary Riccadelli in 2025 published their research, Correctional Officers and the Ongoing Implications of Prison Work, in the Health and Justice Forum, which focuses on the mental, physical, and social health risks of correction service providers, or CSPs. These include all personnel, both corrections officers and civilian personnel. Those are those persons who provide direct services to incarcerated people. Their research paints a picture of a deeply unhealthy group of people with above-average levels of physical health concerns. Their literature suggests correctional employees are facing a mental health crisis with high prevalence of mental health disorders and self-harming behaviors, even when compared to other law enforcement personnel, as noted, premium personnel such as the Guam Police Department, Guam Customs, and the Guam Port Authority. We are the least healthy groups in law enforcement with seriously compromised physical, mental, and social health. We have measurable rates of post-traumatic stress disorder that approach or exceed that of military combat veterans, according to the research. As you have seen from your prison tours or from media accounts, our prison conditions are dire and less than optimal. There is a constant vigilance for exposure to violence, and there is inadequate support to the mission due to our operational structure that is dilapidated, staff shortages, budget constraints, and the inherent stress that comes with managing prisoners. Some of us at the main facility pour money out of our pockets for repairs that are necessary for basic operations, air conditioners that blow out, respiratory health risks, respiratory health risks from poor ventilation, and ceilings that leak whenever there is a heavy downpour. Abstract the prison housing units, I am talking about the Casework and Counseling Services Division office. The prison staff, like the prisoners, face so many challenges and are at constant risk of mental health issues such as burnout, depression, PTSD, and anxiety. We too, alongside corrections officers, face significant challenges within our correctional facility. We share in the challenge of manpower and treatment space shortages. Correctional social workers are categorized under the professional and paraprofessional social services at the Department of Administration. We are also classified as Category 3 Peace Officers under the Peace Officer Standard Training Commission. We are the rehabilitative personnel in the correctional setting. We are housed in the main prison. We interact regularly, daily, with the prisoners. Our post Category 3 Peace Officer status has been questioned, and by its definition, although we do not carry weapons and we do not have arresting powers, we do enforce the rules and regulations of the department and the law. Such examples include, but are not limited to, evaluation and execution of court judgments based on the laws of Guam, sentence computation and classification, and determining program eligibility. That includes job procurement, depending on work release eligibility, evaluating work credit towards sentence reduction, as well as to provide vocational, educational, life skills, and spiritual programming. We also respond to remedy requests that are initiated by the inmates. These interactions with our clients are either favorable or unfavorable. Either way, there are inherent risks to our safety because of the dynamics of being in a correctional setting and in a position of authority. I may add that we also, correctional social workers, perform Category 1 duties of maintenance of custody whenever we monitor inmates during programs without the presence of a corrections officer. The performance of our duty clearly aligns with the correction institution differential pay policy. The policy in part, as Major Uggan mentioned, states correctional personnel at the Department of Corrections are eligible for 25% differential pay. This differential applies to employees whose duties require them to spend at least 50% of their time within the secure confines of correctional facilities or areas designed to prevent inmate-client access to the outside, and is calculated based on the employee's base salary. The current policy also states in part that eligibility is for uniformed personnel of DOC and other department employees, as, as determined by the Director of Corrections, who spend 50% or more of their daily work within secured correctional facilities. Regarding this request, I come before you, changing my course of action through public testimony, because I have had zero success in achieving a favorable outcome from past leadership, including my current director, Fred Bordalio. I have been advised by this legislature, and as noted in the policy, that an amended certified authorization from my director to the Department of Administration is all that is needed. Absence any support at the executive level, I come before your authority to consider taking action and moving forward with legislation. This, in summary, is about fair compensation, strengthening the fabric of our justice system, and acknowledging the hard work and dedication of the correctional social workers. I appeal to your leadership and I ask your support and validation. As the corrections officers do, we too are on the front line serving the least popular and vulnerable outcasts of our community. Thank you.
Sidoos masi, Ms. Tayama. And can you provide that to the committee, please?
Yes. I, I will. Thank you, sir.
Sidoos masi. At this time, I'd like to recognize senators in attendance for any questions or comments they may have. Senator Borja, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't necessarily have any comments, I mean, any questions, but again, thank, thank you for you guys and your team for coming down today to testify. But I do want to at least say is that, you know, at least since I've, you know, I used to live in the States and then coming home and looking at, I started with the government in regards to like wages. Obviously, the private sector is a little lower. I think in, in as much as we think that a lot of Guam workers get paid a lot of money, it's really not a lot. And I think for me, it's sad that we have to pass a bill to, to ask the, the government to figure out how to, to retain and, and attract, you know, employees to come work for the government. I mean, even as the I mean, even as the oversight for GDUE and looking at even what they pay school aides and stuff, I feel like across the government, we really need to take a deep dive in regards to how we compensate our people. You look at the military buildup and where that's going to take the talent in the government of Guam. If we don't do anything, we're going to continue to lose them, you know, to the military buildup. And even to the private sector, I mean, I'll say like, given as when I first got elected, when I looked at trying to find good talent, I had to be competitive in regards to trying to offer a salary that's going to allow, want people to come work in my senatorial office. And so I understand, you know, in regards to the effort, or I appreciate the effort of the sponsor to ensure, you know, like you said, this is, I think, the second or third time, and you guys have our support, or my support, in ensuring that this happens. But we really need to work on getting equity across the government of Guam, I mean, even in the private sector as well, because times are tough and the cost of living is not going down, and we need to ensure that people have a living wage, and this is one of, you know, one of the first steps or second steps in getting there, because we need to ensure that our people can survive in this economy. So thank you for coming, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for this opportunity.
Sidozmasi, Senator Bora. Senator Gomitato, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the panel for being with us this afternoon. I have a few questions, but I don't think you both are able to answer this question, but I'm hoping you can carry it back to your director and that they can answer this for the committee's purpose. What portion of the one point three million dollar general fund appropriation that DOC received in FY two thousand and twenty-five was expended to pay for the twenty corrections officer recruits, which was the balance of this appropriation as of September thirty two thousand and twenty-five, and for what purpose will DOC use the available funds, if any, during FY two thousand and twenty-six, recognizing the carryover authority in the new budget law? I don't think you can answer that question, but I hope you'll carry that back and provide that answer back to the committee. But I think maybe, Anton, you might be able to answer my second question. And, Mr. Chair, I have had the privilege to attend at least the last two quarterly meetings of the Guam Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission meetings, and thank you, Anton, for being there last week. But recognizing the ongoing efforts by the Post Commission to develop a force structure plan, including a uniform approach to compensating our law enforcement officers across the government of Guam, and to properly deal with perennial personnel recruitment and retention issues, to what extent will this particular policy proposal impact the Post Commission's ultimate plan to eliminate barriers which have led to certain agencies being accused in the past of employee poaching in our law enforcement agencies?
Well, Senator, again, like I said in my testimony, the study, if conducted, I believe will provide us with data. Right, I was going to ask several different questions that perhaps the HACE study doesn't ask when they do their, apply the HACE study. But it'll, you know, do a survey, let's talk to the staff, find out some of the conditions, why they leave, why some stay, what are other training opportunities and things that we could create that would make them want to stay with the department. Right now, we have nothing like that. You know, we, yes, they did the retention differential pay for correction officers in a help to recruitment, but today it has not really worked. In fact, I just found out, I mean, we have in FY twenty-six to hire another twenty officers, but right now, we only have ten. DOA is only certifying ten. That's all they have on the qualified. So we're still not attracting, people are still not applying for the department's correction officer's job, and I think this study can impact that and let us know why, you know, what can we do better? What are we not doing better? What can we do better? In regards to the Post Commission, Senator, as I mentioned, one of our challenges I'm working on to try to correct is the position descriptions. The correction officer's position description job series have never been updated since the eighties. And so when you take those current position descriptions as written today and you put them up against in the HACE study, the scoring, the score that the HACE study uses to determine the proper pay grade would be very low as compared to other officers like the Guam police officers or even customs officers. So I am working, that's one of my approach, you know, to hopefully recruiting and retaining some of our staff, is to update those position descriptions. And I think once we do that, you may see a more interest in some of them. But again, right now, everything is just hypothetical, because we have no real data to say this is the right way to go or not, and we're, you know, and I think a study would provide that.
So, Anton, is the Post not the venue to do exactly what the bill is asking to do?
Well, right now, Senator, again, I'm open for everyone. If the Post is one way of doing it, then, you know, I'm more than, you know, open to that possibility. I think that the Post have a lot of law enforcement officers on them, a lot of experienced law enforcement officers, and I think they too can help us, you know, maybe put something together on how to recruit and keep our correctional staff.
And their resources are pretty broad, right?
Yes, they have offered to even assist me with reviewing my position descriptions once I update it. Mr. Lazama, right, he has offered to look at even Mr. Perez, Vince Perez, and they have offered to help me look at those things and bring him up to standard. So once I finish them, you know, I will send it over to them to look at it, and then once that's been good, give it to the director for his approval, then it goes to DOA, hopefully for their approval, and then there's another process involved before it can actually become effective. And so, but we have to start doing it, because, again, the positions are since the eighties. And when you scale that again, the HACE study, so even when they did the HACE study, they used the old position descrip, the current one, which is the old one, and they just used it and put it in the formula, and we ended up at the same place. Nobody in the corrections department, other than the parole officers, ever changed the pay grade. No position, from CO one all the way up to the warden stayed status quo, because, again, the requirements have never changed for those positions. Even though under law, the Post requirement has required us to get college education for certain, you know, to be Post certified. But those, that is not in the position description. So when you do the HACE study, it will not, it will not count towards the pay grade.
All right, thank you, Anton, and I know you got a lot of work you're doing ongoing to this effort, and do appreciate all your service to the people of Guam and to the Department of Corrections. Thank you, Ms. Chair, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Sidozmasi, Senator Gomitato. Senator Montanani, you're recognized.
If you could tell us why the director's not here?
Senator, I'm not sure. He called me earlier. He had to take care of something, and he just asked me to read that statement on his behalf. I didn't ask any further questions other than, you know, yes, sir, I will, I will read it for you. That's it.
But he knew this public hearing was happening?
Yes, he was. He was aware, and again, I don't.
For the Department of Corrections and its employees.
Yes.
Okay. So if you could just kind of clarify, is he not supporting this bill, or he is supporting this bill? Or is he saying, ah, we don't need this bill?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it, Senator, to his statements. The last time I went against a director, I was told my opinion didn't matter, and when we got into a heated discussion, I raised my voice, and the following week, I got a reprimand. So I'm gonna leave it at that and let his statement speak for itself, and I don't want to get in the middle of that, like what happened on the last director that I received the reprimand, so I'm not gonna.
But you testified in support of this bill?
Yes.
You testified in support of this bill?
Yes, me. On behalf of myself, I support it, not, not, again, I didn't read that initial statement that Ms. Tajama put about, that is my statement, it does not reflect my director's opinion, and I do not speak on behalf of the department. It, you know, only the director can speak on behalf of the whole department. I'm just speaking as myself, you know, with thirty-one years in the department and what I see, but yeah, you know, the director has his way of looking at it, and I respect that. And so I just let it, let it, let it go that way, Senator.
Thirty-one years in the Department of Corrections. How many years has Fred Bordalio been the director of the Department of Corrections?
He came in in twenty-
Definitely not thirty-one years, right?
In two thousand and twenty-three August. He came in in two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, so yeah, I was just reading his testimony. It didn't seem like he was one hundred percent in full support of this bill, but somebody here, like yourself and Ms. Tajama, who's been at the Department of Corrections, are saying, we need this.
I think it'd be-
Are you scared that you might, something might happen? There might, you might be reprimanded by the time you get back?
No, I, I know, Mr. Bordalio's, Director Fred is, he's, he's a lot different than the previous director, and, you know, I don't think he would reprimand me or say, I'm not, I'm not disrespecting him or going against this thing, I have my own opinion, and he respects that. He respects my opinion and, you know, and, but, yeah, it's just a tool, Senator, it's a tool, another tool to use to help address this constant revolving door of correctional staff that are coming and leaving, and, you know, I'm, I'm the only one from my cycle of thirty-one years ago, there's nobody left. I mean, you know, they all left, and so maybe this will be a tool.
May I add on to that, when he was, Major Uggan was eloquently speaking about revolving door? Likewise, with our leadership, our directors is a revolving door. I have been with the Department of Corrections for about ten years, and I believe I've had eight directors since then. And in my prior life, I did child protective services. So one thing, when we're looking at issues of safety and adjustment, is that whenever a child is moved from a home, it sets them back developmentally, socially, six months. So in comparison to that, I think, well, you know, I've been with DOC for ten years now, and I've had eight bosses, and within that, within our structural organization, I can only try to figure out how much delay in progress this has had for us, because like I've told our program director, Sarah Thomas Nettadog, when we met, when she began about a year ago, what our long-term and short-term goals are, and I, like I've said with her in a meeting, ma'am, every time for eight times now, I give my long-term goals and my short-term goals. We try to provide guidance to our directors to see how they're able to leave a legacy, and we have a list of things that could help them, should they really want to make an impact. And sadly to say, within these eight times, there have been a few directors that have really helped. The strength that I can find in Director Bordalio is that we were able to hire a clerk and two social workers, and promote our other three that have been with our agency for near, Mr. Perez has been with us for over twenty years. And so those were the strengths, I can say, with Director Bordalio. Director Carbelito was very instrumental in getting this correction institutional differential pay implemented, as well as the cooperative agreement between Guam Behavioral Health. And Director Lamarena was very instrumental in helping DOC get removed from the, from the consent decree. So a lot of them, you know, have had contributions, but there's more. For example, it would be nice if we can get our commissary going. It would be nice if we can really get finalized plans for our new prison and begin groundbreaking. It would be nice if we can have changes, have some of our executive orders turned, reversed, and re-implemented with regard to our sentencing structure and work release program. So there are many things that, you know, we, that have been pushed back because we have new leadership, and then we have to reacquaint, it's like, it just delays our progress. So yes, even amongst leadership, we have a revolving door.
Thank you. I was just hoping the director would be here to fight for DOC and to testify in support of this bill instead of reading, you know, testimony that seemed like, I don't know if I'm really going to support this, maybe, maybe, maybe not, but I would rather, you know, take the advice and guidance from employees that have been there for over three decades. So thank you for coming in and testifying and being here.
Sidozmasi, Senator Montanani. Senator Burnett?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to close, and I also just want to thank my colleagues for their supportive words in support of the legislation. And I too, I'm scratching my head on why Director Bordalio isn't here today, and, you know, my good colleague from Hoggett had asked, does he support the bill or does he not support the bill? Well, it kind of depends on which of his testimonies you read, because in this testimony, he says he supports the bill, and in this one, he says he doesn't. So kind of confused, see, Director Bordalio. But, you know, we're here to fight for DOC, and, you know, I tried to get this in the budget, we got this thing passed unanimously. I want to thank Mr. Chair for supporting this effort in the previous term. It was vetoed, and we're right back here at the drawing board. And in some ways, I kind of agree with the director, because we didn't need to pass a law for DOA to do this very similar study for the Guam Police Department. They did it on their own, and I think, I think former Director Carbelito was kind of one of the people that pushed this study forward for GPD, and that's why when he was director of DOC, this kind of discussion with him and the leadership and the corrections family about introducing this bill, because that's what Director Burn again told me, was he said, hey, you're going to have to introduce a bill saying we got to do a study on corrections at pay. So, you know, here we are again, back at the drawing board, I'm hoping that we can get a favorable support. I'm hoping we can get the bill on the agenda. I don't agree with Director Bordalio's testimony where he says that this will jeopardize the corrections family's, you know, inclusion in the HACE study. Again, if it worked for GPD, I think we can do the same thing for DOC. And we talk about the law enforcement entities in the government of Guam that are suffering the most from recruitment and retention challenges. I mean, the big three, it's the Department of Corrections, the Guam Police Department, and Customs, and Quarantine. And so, you know, I did a retention effort for the Guam Police Department, a triennial bonus that, you know, I'm thinking maybe that's another thing that we can put to the pieces of the puzzle in solving a lot of these issues with the Department of Corrections. And, Ms. Tajama, I want to beg your, I sincerely apologize for not including the social workers and the parole officers in the bill. We had tried to just, we introduced the bill back in May, and, you know, my intention was at the time, you know, we got a new legislature, new committees, you know, I'm not on a lot of these committees, so I just wanted to get the bill in as early as I could and let it run the system. So I'm very grateful for the chair that we're getting this hearing today, and it was always my intention, because you had previously brought up these concerns, it was always my intention to amend the bill to, you know, cast as broad a stroke as we can. And, you know, it is frustrating that the director's not here. I think you got a lot of support for the corrections family up here on this panel, but it should be the director. You know, if you had the director of the agency sticking up for the employees, going to DOA, going to Adaloo, saying, hey, we need a, we need a, you know, I think you guys need an increase in pay, skip the study, I think the study's going to show, but, you know, I mean, obviously, we need to be targeted with data and, you know, how we implement this, because as you can see, when we gave the first round of law enforcement incentive, it didn't really solve the issues that we're still facing today. I mean, we thought it was going to be an eighteen, twenty percent silver bullet, and everyone would be happy, but it actually, in some ways, made things worse, because, again, we didn't address some of the disparities between the law enforcement entities that are really struggling with retention and recruitment. I mean, look at some of these, and I don't want to name any names, but there's some of these, you know, people in the law enforcement family, I mean, they're in the air con, you know what I mean? They're not working as hard as DOC, not working as hard as GPD, and that's not to say people aren't working hard out there, but, you know, that's part of our job up here, is we have to prioritize and, you know, figure out where the importance lies and who we have to take care of in terms of being able to address, you know, these very critical shortfalls. And I think it's, it's that one, too. It's the crimes that are happening out here every day on the streets, putting the people of Guam at danger, and it's the crimes and the issues of the Department of Corrections. I mean, those are very clearly the top two things. I also want to thank the members of the SWAT team and Captain Bukaiwi for coming out to support the bill. You know, in absence of the director, like I said, I think you guys got some strong support here in the thirty-eighth Guam Legislature, and I'm hoping that we can, you know, address all the concerns that you brought up, ma'am, as well as the parole division, and, you know, turn out a good bill that I'm hoping we can get onto the next session, the committee, you know, if they would indulge that. So thank you again for your testimony, and to the Department of Corrections family, let's try one more time, you know, Tat Lu Mbiayi, but it's going to be the third time, so you're knock on wood, and I hope we get this thing through. So Sidozmasi and biva DOC.
Thank you, sir.
Sidozmasi, Senator Burnett, and once again to Major Uggan, as well as Ms. Tajama. You know, it's interesting, I think a lot of times when we look at these different compartmentalized approaches, right? I think a lot of times- I think a lot of times, it appears as though there's enough built in to the department administration process, enough built into the post, and I'm, I'm not saying it's not. But if you don't drive something on a specific issue, a lot of times, it's hard to get to an outcome. And so we'll see where this goes again. Major Uggan, I think that you, you kind of expressed something that maybe, you know, our chair will go back to the post to see even, you know, whether they should refine some of their, you know, the way they look at things, is that the study is not designed to just talk about, hey, you know, is the pay scale and what's being conducted in terms of the evaluation through the HAY study or otherwise, is that adequate, and does that reflect what the issue is? Obviously, we have something different at Department of Corrections. It is one of the perennial law enforcement areas where we see a lot of high turnover, and of course, conditions have a lot to do with that. But there's, like you said, Major Uggan, there's got to be more associated with it. So I, I don't know what the reason for pushback or not wanting to at least just conduct this going forward is, I don't, you know, and we'll have to discuss that in the markup and discuss it when it hits the floor, but, I mean, I just, I don't think it's unreasonable to conduct this. It's not something that's perennial and eternal. It's a one-shot deal where they go on and say, hey, let's, let's focus on this area and get some additional information to see what we have to do going forward. And so it might include, you know, things beyond just pay, and it might include things where they recognize, like you said, if there's adjustments in the way that structures are for recognizing duties and responsibilities, and they're not there, well, then you have to capture that, and why, you know, and also, are there equivalencies to that? So I agree with the bill, I agree with the concept I did from the beginning. The one thing that happens down here a lot of times, like Senator Burnett said, is you catch administrators, you catch directors, you know, at a social function or the like, and they say, oh, it's under control, you know, we're going to take care of that, because we can just do that through our processes, but, and then when you speak to them another time, they say, well, you know, if you don't have a mandate for it, then it's not going to get done. So let's try a mandate again, but we'll see the evolution of the bill through the committee work. I'll work with a good senator, the author, to mark it up, and then we'll get it on the floor and see where it goes from there. But once again, thank you to the DOC family, as been mentioned, for coming out. I think you got a graduation coming up soon, maybe, right? You gotta.
Yes, we have an ongoing cycle right now, so should be graduating soon, and then I'm gonna, we're gonna try to hire those, well, interview the 10, so that we can at least get some of them on board and start the academy for whoever accepts the performance. So, you know, the academy will be spread out, but we got to keep them going and keep them coming in.
Congratulations on your progress. The ones that I've been able to attend, I've always been very impressed. You got a great training team up there and everything, so we'll pray for those that are currently in the cycle, and hopefully we'll onboard them soon.
We have four that will be graduating with GPD, I think, at the end of December.
Yes.
So they were embedded, they started earlier, so they were embedded with GPDs. So they'll be graduating with GPD, and then shortly after, we have another, I believe it's 15 of them that are going to graduate a few months later. And then we're going to, again, try to get the extra, you know, hire more, so we can keep them going.
Yeah, when we heard the budget, I was really impressed with that. When the, when the police cycle came down, I was, a few green uniforms out there. So congratulations to them, and like I said, we'll pray for the others who are currently going through their training. I think they're four or fifth month into it, and hopefully we get them onboard soon. Once again, thank you for coming out, and so this will conclude today's public hearing on bill numbers 186 and 140-38COR. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on the bills within seven calendar days from this day, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Christopher M. Duñez, as chairman of the committee, or mail 2163 West Chalan Sotapapa Nagatia 96910. You may also email your testimonies to senator.duñez@guamilegalistature.gov. Today's public hearing is now adjourned, and the time is 3:15. Sidoos Masi, and have a great afternoon.